So.
Follow the Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission meeting to order for Monday, March sixth, twenty twenty-three. Record that all are present from attendance. If moving into Article Two Pledge of Allegiance, I would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great father of which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
That's fine. That's why I did it.
Hey. Before we move on to Article Three, I think we have a new father that has joined us this evening. Congratulations and welcome back.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Congrats.
Everything assume is going well?
Not sleeping a lot, but besides that.
That's good for you.
For the sleep.
Get used to it.
Use this for.
Yeah, you get used to it. You can pause. No. Same.
Just saying. Excellent.
I make a motion to approve the current agenda.
Moved by Member Rissy and supported by Member Ringo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, we'll move on. Would anybody like to disclose a conflict of interest?
As a matter of fact, I would. I don't think I've ever been able to, so I was really excited about this.
Let's hear it.
Article eight, I believe that I have, while I know I have done my businesses doing work at the applicant's home. So nothing related to the project, but there is kind of a relationship with the applicant. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I have had no conversations regarding this project or property with that person and I haven't talked to them in months, maybe even years. So I just wanted to throw it out there. I don't think it's a conflict, but I did want to disclose it.
Does anybody have a concern with Member Rissy's conflict or appearance of a conflict?
No, I do not.
Okay, hearing none, you'll stay on. Does anybody else that wishes to disclose a conflict?
I'm a member of Watermark. I don't know if that's conflict.
Does anybody see Member Rollins?
No, that.
There is a conflict.
I don't, you have to be a member and you guys are pointing at me.
Beating at their restaurant. We all, yeah, so, okay, we're gonna move forward. We need to approve the minutes of the February sixth meeting. Anybody like to take a stab at that?
So move.
Okay, moved by Member Rissy.
Support.
Supported by Member Ringo.
I didn't find an error.
You do?
Yes, so.
Let's hear it.
Lady brought it up.
Graphical.
Article seven, third to the last line.
You weren't the secretary at that time.
Depends on what he finds.
It's two O O, which should be two O. T O O, which would be T O, reason to industrial.
I see that. You're right. I was never real good at English.
Thank you, Member Brannan.
While we're fixing that sentence.
Oh, hang on.
Go ahead. You probably delete the of them part, so just say, and none that attended.
The secretary, the cur.
What, what, Article seven?
The first paragraph of Article seven, so keep going on. Right here, and none of them.
That's ended the meeting. You want to strike the none of them? So it's just.
I guess I would strike the of them.
Of them.
So I would read and none that attended the meeting instead of and none of them that attended the meeting. It's just like a
That's a fair.
Very wordy sentence, I guess.
Sure.
Yep.
I'll go along with those.
All right, so the motion is made with the amendments by Member Brannan, Member Richardson, and supported by Member Ingo. All those in favor say aye.
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 Hearing none opposed, we'll move forward. Article six, acknowledge visitors who are wishing to speak. We will have a public hearing for the fifteen fifty Thorn Apple River Drive. So if you're here for that, you can wait. But if you're here for Watermark or anything else, now would be one of two opportunities if you wish to speak. Nobody out there? Okay. All right. We will move on to Article seven case.
My line.
Actually, she took her head now.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem. Moving on to Article seven, case number twenty-three dash three, seven, five, three, J Visser Designs. Well, Madison.
I don't know how much you want us to move.
Um.
Okay, hello, everyone. We have an application from J Visser Designs for fifteen fifty Thorn Apple River Drive. And they are looking to expand their accessory building by adding on eight hundred and twenty-five square feet, which would require a type one special use permit from the planning commission because it exceeds the allowable eight thirty-two square feet by right. The property has an existing boathouse of six hundred and seventy square feet. We just wanted to make a note that it was determined with the applicant that it is a detached accessory building. And a total square footage of the new building would be fourteen ninety-five. We looked into the property, did a site visit and noticed there was a shed on the property that we would require to be removed. The applicant is aware and is okay with that. We evaluated the site plan to meet our zoning standards and all of the setbacks are meeting the requirements. And then the proximity of the boathouse to the water is allowed per item G on this in chapter four of our zoning ordinance. They don't have to have a setback from the water's edge. In reviewing the factors for you guys to consider, the building as a whole is a pretty standard type of building around the river, a boathouse made to be designed in the look of the rest of the home. The homes along the river are similar in size and they may not have as large a boathouses, but again, it's not uncommon in the area. And we did receive a total of three letters of support from across the river directly next door and then another resident who submitted in support. My recommendation based on the factors above, not having too many adverse effects or any adverse effects. I would recommend approving this with conditions that the proper permits are obtained for building close to the water. That the accessory building isn't used as a living or dwelling space and that that existing shed that's on the property would be removed by the time the project is completed. I did also bring the plans that have the existing well and drain field because that did come up as an issue before, so I brought it as your request.
Okay.
You, Scott.
So it would be out of the way. And not interfering.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Any questions for staff? Uh, not a business out of there either, right? You didn't say that, but I'm scrolling through because I thought I remembered. I mean, that should be a requirement too that there's, you just didn't say it. I just want to make sure that that's.
The accessory building is not used as a living space or dwelling or to run a business.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Any other questions for staff?
I may have missed this, but any lighting concerns?
There wasn't any proposed lighting, but we could add a condition that any exterior lighting would have to adhere to our zoning standards.
We usually do.
And building standards.
I think Member Brannan has a question.
A couple. When you're looking at square footage, it's a two-story accessory building, which is, I think, in my opinion, kind of unusual. So when we're saying that it's six hundred and eighty square feet.
It was the two-story is existing, as I understand it.
Right, so it's thirteen sixty really of finished space, is that correct?
No, it's my understanding that the two-story is the existing building and then they're adding an additional six hundred one story.
Right.
Right, so it's not.
Eight twenty-five.
Yeah, so I'll show you the picture that I, this building is existing, this is what they're adding.
Right, but this building here that is six eighty is six eighty level one, six eighty level two.
He's looking at the total of the accessory building. Can you, is, how is that measure? I mean, it's how is that measured though? I mean, like.
I had Brian pull up the township documentation and it says what was the exact term?
Yeah, when measuring accessory building size, we've definitely used the footprints. Yeah, use the footprint of the building to measure that. Somebody have setback restrictions based on the height of the building.
Okay, so then you wouldn't measure the second floor?
Not for terms of deciding whether it's special uses.
Is it standard? I'm sorry, you don't use your mark?
Remember, I'll remember Rissy has a question.
You know, I'll ask my question to the applicant later.
Okay.
I was just surprised when you add it all up, it's going to be about three thousand square foot of space, which is extremely large accessory.
Yeah, just when we consider these permits, we use the footprint as a standard. So that's what I've considered here.
And then the final one was the size of lot versus the amount of, I would call it like built out space. By my thumbnail calculations, it's like twenty-five percent of the land would be an impervious material. Is that kind of right? Is that, how does that compare to most residential lots? Because I mean, is they have a, an accessory drive, a two-stall drive, a turnaround, a roundabout, lots of cement slabs, lots of decking, and we're adding more? Is that in line as a newbie and a councilor, just stuff I'm looking at?
Yeah, so when I looked at that, they have a little over an acre and the building that they're going to be adding is behind anything seen from the road or it's not added onto the front necessarily and it's added on into the slope at the back. So it didn't seem to be too obtrusive into the existing open space on the property. So that's the consideration that I took in the factors there.
I think your point was about impervious surface.
It was, it's
Oh, okay.
runoff at twenty-five percent coverage. It seems larger than I would have guessed is typical. And I just wondered if I had any data on that.
I do not have any specific data on that, no.
It'd be worthy, I remember Renaud, to consider that it is a riverfront property and having lived on that, that river, I would say by and large, a lot of the the, the lots have larger dwellings compared to, so if you were to look at that data, I would look at it through that filter.
Right.
Other people, of course. I do have a question.
Did Member Roland have a question?
Uh, no, I can, I can do, we have our comment.
Okay.
Thing, it's more of a statement, yeah.
Yeah.
I just have a question about G, chapter four of the zoning ordinance. I just want clarification. So the zoning ordinance does allow for boathouses, is that correct?
Yes.
And they are considered your outbuilding?
They're considered an accessory building, yes, but the setback gets an exception for the water.
I just wanted to clarify because I thought I had heard somewhere that we didn't, that was old, the old ones were being grandfathered in. So I just wanted clarification that we do allow. Oh.
We do and we've approved them in the past.
Recent.
Recent Scott's time.
That's all I, that's all I needed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions of staff? Is the applicant present? And if you are, would you be willing to come up and answer questions? We have some. If you could, when you come up, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you.
Hi, Tom Auburn, fifteen fifty Thorn Apple River Drive.
Thanks for coming in, Tom. Okay, who wants to go first?
No, I don't have any. It would be more of a.
Yeah, we get to the, yeah, I remember Brannan, do you have questions for the applicant?
Um, no, not, he'd probably better answers than our own staff.
Right, Member Rissy.
What kind of boat are you playing to put this beautiful boathouse that you've, you know?
We have a pontoon.
Okay. Good.
Any other questions of the applicant? Anything, any statements you want to make on behalf of the project?
No, I mean, I think it's a beautiful addition to the house and it actually would take away somewhat eyesore of our current boat lift.
Sure.
Which actually blocks our neighbors' views, so.
What's the intent for the, the space?
To put our pontoon in.
Just there, okay.
Yep.
And you have enough length for that?
Or the pontoon?
Yeah.
Oh, actually, it's a, it's a well-used body of water. I mean, there's lots of people that are out there.
No, I mean, the boathouse. I'm familiar with the water.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Length in the boathouse to accommodate what you need to do.
Yep. Okay, Jeff is our architect has made sure that everything is, I mean, what you're seeing here is going to accommodate our needs.
Good. I think the reason is asking is page twelve, there's a note that says verify there's enough length for the boat to fit in here.
Yes. That would be one very important factor.
I can still on the print.
It'd be a bummer if we put it in and it's still sticking out.
Says that over time, you have a tendency to get another one and sometimes it's bigger.
Yeah, no, this one isn't going to be getting bigger, that's for sure.
I would like to make a general comment and the miss that thank your neighbors for emailing in. That's important to us because we're flying in the, in the dark a lot of times. And so when your neighbors email in, that, that's a big help to us. So we appreciate that.
Yeah, well, actually, that was spontaneous. I guess a letter is sent out to them.
Okay, good.
So we are grateful.
It's the most positive correspondence that I have seen on a accessory.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It goes a long way.
Yeah, uh, Member Maxley.
Uh, just a general comment as an architect, I think this is handsome addition, your facility. And I'm at, at that corner quite often because I live in Tamarone. Okay. Out there at Bridgewater.
Fantastic.
It's, it's a beautiful place to start with.
Thanks.
And I'll just add my two cents here. As a, as a former resident on Dennison Drive at the end of Don McDonald's old house, having been in the old farmhouse preceded yours, you've done a really nice job with a somewhat limited space on that corner and Tom Brooks did a wonderful job on your landscaping. Phenomenal, both in terms of privacy and his selections there. So kudos to the whole team.
Well, we, we have been blessed with some pretty amazing people on our side.
Makes a difference.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions for the applicant? Tom, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Make a motion, go to public hearing.
Motion made by Member Rissy and supported by, supported by Member Ingo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, we'll go to public hearing. Would anybody like from the public to say anything about this matter? Anybody on the Zoom?
I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made by Member Rissy and supported by, by Member Corsonage. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, we'll move out of public hearing into planning commission comments. Does anybody have any comments?
Oh, I do. As a collector of boats, I would say that I appreciate what they're trying to do here and it looks, looks like a pretty good plan to me. And unless anybody else has any comments to make, I'd make a motion in favor of it with the with the recommendation, including that proper permits are to be obtained for work being done at the water's edge and the accessory building is not to be used as a living space or to run a business. And any outdoor lighting needs to meet our regulations and the existing shed on the property must be removed.
Yeah, I, I would like to, I'm sorry, we, you guys just went right to it, so.
We can have discussion.
No, I just, the shed, I, I mean, I want, I'd like that shed down before it's completed, if not sooner, right? I mean, because I don't. Is that reasonable? I, I only say that because what if they have materials in the shed that they'd like to move to this when it's completed? In the past, we've typically allowed them to keep the other building up until within a reasonable period of time when the new one is finished. Okay, then let's put a reason, what's the reasonable period of time?
Uh, well, you know, like, uh, three months or ninety days after the last inspection is approved?
Yeah, it could be less than that because it's just a shed. It's not like it's a huge.
Sure.
Moving things.
Thirty days?
I only mentioned it to be consistent.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just, I just, you know, it, the, the next article that we're going to talk about is, I mean, it's, it's, so I just want to make sure that something's in there that says, listen, you guys got to practice thing with the next amount.
I think that's smart.
Yeah.
I think that's smart. So I would amend the motion to also include the condition that the shed must be removed within thirty days of the final approved building permit or building inspection. You support that still, Mr. Maxley?
Okay, sorry. So motion made by Member Rissy and supported by Member Moxley. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, hearing none. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Good job.
Okay. Moving forward to case number twenty-three dash three, seven, five, five, Watermark Property LLC.
Should say, excuse me, Chair.
Yes, there was one no vote.
Oh, I voted no, sorry.
I did not hear you. I'm sorry. But the record reflects that we had one no vote. They'll hear you and they do the minutes, so, but double check that just to be sure.
All right.
All right.
So here are the applicants requesting site plan approval for in addition to the east side of the existing clubhouse building at Watermark Country Club. The sites in the Watermark P U D and the clubhouse is located at the end of Galbraith Avenue. The P U D was created nineteen ninety-seven, has been amended several times since then. This is a fairly straightforward site plan request. Apart from a restriction in the P U D ordinance that limits the size of the building to thirty thousand square feet. The ordinance is not explicitly defined what areas of the building are meant to be included in that calculation. Typically for a commercial building, we'd include all of the floor area within the building as that method is going to easily repeatable from building to building and easy to apply to any other site plan. However, in two thousand thirteen, an addition was approved to the west side of the building and as part of that site plan review of the mechanical, mechanical and start card storage areas in the lower level were not counted towards the building size. So the reasoning being that these areas were not usable space that would generate additional parking or traffic to the site, which were the primary concerns for the use there. I informed the applicant that since that method was previously used, they could use those calculations again for their application, although the planning commission will obviously have the final determination for your review tonight. So using kind of that previous calculation, the building had approximately twenty-five thousand four hundred square feet of what I'll call usable space after the previous addition, which would allow for four thousand six hundred square feet to be added and still remain under that thirty thousand square foot. The site plan shows that this new addition would add four thousand fifty-seven square feet of usable space, keeping the building below that thirty thousand square feet. So whenever an addition is added to a commercial building, we review the parking on site to see if it can accommodate that added space. For this site, there would be three hundred forty-six spaces required to accommodate all of the uses. There are two hundred ninety-seven existing spaces on site with forty-nine deferred spaces available to be built, as well as an agreement with an adjacent property to use fifty of those, their spaces. So as long as that parking agreement is still in place and there are enough parking spaces available and the deferred spaces don't have to be constructed yet at this time. The fire department and township engineer both reviewed the application and approved the plans. In a stormwater maintenance agreement will need to be recorded. One additional item that does need to be addressed is a condition of approval from two thousand thirteen that I found while reviewing that case. Just that the small one acre parcel immediately to the west of the clubhouse was to be combined with a larger golf course parcel. And it appeared that was required because of setback issues with the addition that was constructed then. So for whatever reason, it appears that the combination was not completed, so I am requiring that those lots be combined before a building permit is issued for this new project. So at this time, staff are recommending site plan approval for the proposed addition with the four conditions listed in the staff report that the applicant complies with the township engineer letter, that a stormwater maintenance agreement is recorded, confirmation that the parking agreement is still in place and active, and then combining the lots at sixteen sixteen and sixteen hundred Galbraith Avenue.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, with regard to the parking agreement, when you're saying verify, is that something that that would be in writing that they would then submit for our files? How are you?
Yeah, just getting written confirmation from that. It should be a recorded agreement. Just wanting confirmation from them that it's still.
That's good. I just want to make sure it's in writing and we have a copy of it. Okay.
Great. And how long does length that agreement need to be to satisfy the?
I believe it's indefinite, or the idea if it is, you know, go away, then they do have to construct those deferred spaces actually. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Any other questions?
Um, what did that mean? Sorry.
Member Richardson.
Um, what did that mean about fifty spaces on adjacent property?
So there's the office complex next to it. So there's an agreement that the golf course can use fifty spaces. So I mean, we add those to their existing parking as it's an allowed sharing of parking spaces there.
Is the off, sorry, is the office then have fifty excess spaces?
I believe so. Yeah, yeah. So I mean, they usually have enough spaces to accommodate that shared use. And we'll monitor that too if we get complaints or see people parking on grass where they're not supposed to if an issue comes up, but at this point, I've not been aware of any parking issues there.
Well, people park on the grass all the time.
Well, yeah.
So Member Rissy has a question.
Remembering. I, I did, and I think I may have answered my own question on the internet here. It's a very useful tool, but so this is a, this is not the same facility where they asked for an addition in twenty nineteen with the snap fitness and the pool and stuff. This is the other building.
This is the clubhouse where the restaurant is located.
Thank you. But it's the same property.
Same.
It's the same P U D.
Yeah, right.
Same P U D, but it's, but it's a different parcel altogether.
Yeah, correct.
Member Ingo.
Do we know why the two pieces of property that were required to be combined is a precondition of our last approval? Why that wasn't done?
I don't know. I haven't seen anything and why it was allowed to that, it is was allowed to go without with that combination, so I'm not sure.
Is it the same ownership today that's asking for the?
I believe so. I may be able to speak that a little bit and I've made them aware of that condition.
Okay, any additional questions for Brian?
Yeah.
Yes. Was this one of the sites identified as a PFAS issue?
Not to my knowledge.
I, I mean, it is where the old lax plant.
That's what I thought was the old lax.
Yeah, before you answer that, we want to double.
Again, not to my knowledge, but it could be, I guess. Yeah, I haven't heard any, recently I didn't see anything in the notes from two thousand thirteen of issues, I guess.
Just my, my concern would be, again, fairly new to this board and fairly new to the community. I thought this was the old lax site. And I thought this was a PFAS. So my question was, when you start excavating and you've got runoff, is there an issue with that?
I don't know if where the clubhouse is per se is where that lax plant was. It's my understanding that it was further over, but we might be able to ask the applicant that.
Good question.
Any other questions for Brian?
Oh, yeah. Do you know why we didn't follow the standard protocol, what you're saying of usually all the square footage is counted? It sounded like there was a little bit of I don't know, creativity around that. And since we let it happen once, is, is it?
I think there's the argument.
You're repeating it?
I think just in this case, if something new was coming for me, I wouldn't do that. I told them that, you know, it makes sense that there, that area is not including increasing traffic or parking or those things that were concerned for the site. So that's the only reason I, so they can go with those numbers. But again, something new coming in, I, I wouldn't use that approach. And just almost more for just simplicity sake of giving the same from site to site.
So if it were a new applicant, we would not allow them to remove nonusable space when figuring the total square footage in the P U D.
Well, and sometimes it's defined more clear in the P U D, this one that isn't as defined. So it is a little bit of interpretation there, unfortunately, where again, for creating a new P U D, we'd say, you know, right in there specifically, if it's just total square foot or things like that. But since this was an older P U D and doesn't have that definition written in there, that's kind of why that seemed to occur.
Member Brannan?
What would be the effort in making it clearer in the P U D so that we don't revisit this again?
We'd have to go through the whole P U D amendment process, which, you know, here they want to come here just for the site plan approval, which is one meeting. The P U D requires public hearings and multiple meetings with this, and then the township board as well.
Bro, is it common for a site plan to have the spa, that the the space for, for forty-nine parking spaces, but to not create those parking spaces and use an adjacent buildings parking? And I'm saying like they have the space. I understand they probably don't want to do it because it costs money, but is that?
It's a little unique, but I mean, we prefer to see that way as well. We want as little impervious surface as possible. We don't want people making new parking lots that don't need to be used.
Okay. Okay, just want to make sure it's not unusual.
Yep.
Any other questions for Brian? Thank you. The applicant would step forward. Same drill, name and address.
Sure, I'm Rob Behrens with Naderville, did the site plan. I have Craig Smith and Jeremy Edwards from Red, Redwater Group with me, as well as the architect to address some of these questions. I guess this is, this building addition is on the east side. We're talking about square footage is what's included and what's not. The building main floor, where you go into the restaurant, that is about a twenty-five hundred square foot addition. The other fifteen hundred is down below. Where the, I think it's the pro shop is down there, so it's going to be, it's going to enhance the experience of the, of the patrons there for the, for the restaurant dining and. And then for the. The golf. Pro shop there, so. As far as a parcel combination, I wasn't around in two thousand thirteen when that happened and I've talked to the ownership group. They said it just slipped through the cracks, they've already told us to get it going, so our survey team is working on that parcel combination already. Mr. Smith could speak to that more if you had further questions, stormwater maintenance agreement, we've read the. The requirement for that and we're good with that. Uh, Mr. Smith also did, talking about the person, the parking. Agreement, that is a recorded document with Kent County Register of Deeds. It was recorded in, I don't, I had. Do you have that document that you signed? The date, it's a recorded document with the thing, it's still in effect. We can make another copy of it online to show it to you, but, you know, versus an email, if we need to get a letter from the current owner that it's still in effect. That's fine, but, but we can assure you, we still use those and it's a seasonal parking thing. And it seemed to work fairly well. Um, so. Yeah, that's stormwater, we, we're not adding any sewer or water, public utilities. Stormwater is going to be directed to the same place where it goes now, it actually goes to the north. To the existing pond when you first come in behind from Cascade Road there, so the infrastructure's there. Yeah, if you have any questions about the, the building, the actual concrete, so when we're, we're moving twenty some odd feet, twenty-five, twenty-eight feet to the east. The actual edge of the concrete that's there today, if you're familiar with the cart storage. We tried to maintain that, so we're doing everything from there to the building, kind of. Adding the building in there and we have to change the, the ramp to go down into the car storage area, so there's a little bit of addition. Right at the top of that ramp so that we can get the carts in and out, but. I believe we satisfied the engineer. And so, yeah, we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have questions for the applicant?
I do. So you're adding to the side of the restaurant above where the carts are stored currently. And what are you going to do with that new space? Is it just going to be added to the restaurant?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
It's expanding restaurant?
Expanding.
Okay.
So there will be some additional pro shop area and then a little bit of additional cart storage, because we're just pulling a whole area out.
Okay, so the pro shop's going to stay downstairs or? Oh, it's going to move upstairs. Okay. Okay, so the pro shops can move upstairs, bar is going to be bigger, more restaurant space, okay?
Marygo.
I just was curious, is the parking arrangement, uh, an affirmative easement on the adjoining property? Is it a use easement or is it a contractual arrangement where you have, they have agreed to provide this. Potential use of their parking space for some consideration, what, what's the arrangement?
I don't know, do you remember Craig, if you paid for that parking? The fifty spaces north of the, north of the.
No, it's, it's actually, it's actually a. Trade basically, so because of all seasonal businesses. Our busy time of the year is May through August. And that office parks busy time of the year was four September through. Uh, April, so it's really a trade where we have their spaces to use those busy months of the year. And they actually can have a few more spots in the other months. So we really played off the seasonality of when we're. Because most of the time our lot's not very full, it's still three months of the year we need their spaces.
Is that agreement in writing?
Yes, so it's been reported, I think it was in year two thousand, when the property was built, that's when that was. Two thousand one, somewhere in there.
Township staff actually has the actual recorded document.
Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody have any comments before we put this up for a vote?
Well. Please first.
The comment I have is just, I think, and it's. Maybe not directed them, maybe it's directed them, just the frustration that there was stipulations previously that were not followed through with. Um. And I know that's. It's a huge issue within the township and hopefully things have been set in place to correct that, to not let that happen in the future. But when I first looked at this, my initial thought was, I think we should table it all together until those things are corrected. But hearing that they are already in the process of it, I think helps some. Um. But yeah.
You could prohibit them from breaking ground until it's done.
That's what I was going to recommend, yeah, just say it has to be done before the building permit is issued.
Well, I think that's what Brian said, the permit wasn't going to be issued until those.
And reading or hearing that from him, I think helped that. It's just frustrating, because I think for years and years and years, there's been stipulations put in place in Cascade and. And builders and people have just disregarded them and done what they wanted to do and. I think that's all I have to say.
Yes. I would say similarly with, with the PUDs, right? Why do we create all these rules and regulations and then we just kind of. Squint and let everything fly through, it just seems like there's a credibility issue being new to, new to the board, like the previous topic was eight hundred and thirty-two square feet. And if you read it with a legal eye, I think it would take thirty-two square feet, period, and we just approved something for three thousand four times it. Where do we start drawing the lines on actually following our documentation that's in front of us? This is the second one in a row, we're going to say. When it could be done, I think. Completely correct, I mean, it's beautiful, just like the previous one, beautiful, I mean. Fantastic, but we're violating kind of some of the background behind it, they could change the PUD. And actually, we wouldn't be subverting something that's already there.
I wonder sometimes. I want to answer that really quick, the, the accessory building, the eight hundred and thirty-two square feet was set up and I've talked to the people who put it there. Only so that this body saw it, it was never intended as a hard rule, like it can't exceed that. It was only there to say, hey. We don't, every property is going to be unique, so instead of putting rules in place, we'd rather say if it's over eight hundred and thirty-two square feet.
I could say twenty-four.
Eight twenty-four, my apologies. If it's, if it's over eight hundred and twenty-four, we want the planning commission to look at it and make a unique judgment. So.
And, and looking at, that's why they also give us documentation with the packet that. Which this one was a little harder, but I think that goes around an acre. Looking at previously approved ones, which have already set the precedence of what we have done. Um, knowing that still fell within those is why I felt comfortable approving that. Um, and knowing there was no neighbors.
The opposite.
Yeah, yeah, so I, just for. That's how I looked at the previous one and this one, I'm looking at that Brian is telling us there was no exact stipulations in that PUD to clarify. Knowing that moving forward, those clarifications will be there. When this was looked at previously by the planning commission, this is the square footage they took in consideration. So it's already been looked at once. The twenty-four hundred, twenty-four thousand square foot is what they thought then out of the thirty thousand. So I feel comfortable then moving forward based on those numbers that were used here previously. If it was something completely different, then I think. We'd have to look at it differently, but just knowing two pieces, it's been looked at before, this is the square foot they counted before. And knowing that moving forward, there will be better clarification, I feel much more.
Yeah. I think I heard you and I think I listened and all makes a lot of sense, except I think the clarification, it's not going to be documented. Anymore than it currently is, they're not changing the PUD to make it correct, we're doing the same grandfathering.
Correct, it, but it will be in the minutes again, that this is what we consider. As the square footage goes QD, which is what I'm assuming Brian got for the last time it was considered.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, so these are kind of directed in Brian's direction. Is it safe to say that with the new computer software we have now? The chances of us missing this again are limited, that's the first question, and the second question is. Will this requirement, these requirements like the parking and writing and the combo. Be put into the computer software as a red flag to say, hey, these need to be filled before the permit can be issued?
Yeah, allows for much easier tracking of conditions, whether it's, you know, one or thirteen or something like that, so. You know, again, and so we get the building permit and I go back and check and I don't sign off on the building permit until I checked all those boxes for any conditions that were part of approval.
Perfect.
Yes, thank you.
Site plan review. Was wonderful. As somebody who is not an engineer, I think it was much easier to read than some of the previous ones personally. Um, and I think that it was, it was very clear to me what he looked at, which is, are all questions that I think we normally ask and it was nice to see them addressed. In his, um, report. So just.
Nice to have an engineer.
Eric, it was, it was nice to read in it.
In addition to staff.
Yeah, yeah.
With that, any other? Doesn't anybody like to take a stab at it?
It'll look nice.
Somebody.
I did the last one.
I can't do it as the chairman.
All right.
Scroll back up to get.
I'll go, I'll go ahead and for case number twenty-three dash three seven five five, since everybody's sleeping apparently. I'll make a recommendation, uh, um, to approve the site plan for approximately four thousand square foot addition to the clubhouse with the following conditions. The applicant complies with the township letter dated February ten of twenty twenty-three and all necessary permits are obtained for construction begins. And number two, they will record the stormwater maintenance agreement. Three, confirmation that the parking agreement is still in place and active, sounds like it is. And four, they will combine the lot at sixteen sixteen Galbraith Avenue with sixteen hundred Galbraith Avenue. Prior to getting a building permit.
Support that motion.
Thank you, member, motion made by member Rissy. Uh, supported by member Moxley.
Quick, quick question before we take a vote, do we want to put anything in there about the parking being in writing? The, I mean, they, they said that it's in writing and you're saying the township should have it. All right, I, I didn't hear it, so sorry.
Yep. Okay, anybody, all right, all those in favor stay aye. Aye, any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, hearing one, okay. It passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
People scrolling.
Moving right along.
Yeah, Article nine, old business, before we get to the planning commission bylaws. I'm going to let Scott give us an update on our. Being with the township board.
Yes, we did have a meeting with the township board and I guess it wasn't so much a meeting as it was a. A presentation, I guess you could say, so Chris and I stood up in front of the township board last week and told them what we've been working on, on the air. Uh, AC zoning district subcommittee and. Told them about the, the motion that we made at the planning commission level and. The township board seemed to be in full support of us moving. Forward and what we've been talking about, there didn't seem to be anybody. Um, but we had some questions and things and I think there might have been some things that weren't quite understood, but that was. Clarified and, and so we, we moved forward from there. Um, now I think we're at a crossroads where. This kind of breaks into two different things now, the way I, I see it. We've got two issues, one is we have. The need to, um, update our master plan. And the other issue is we need to circle back around to what the AC zoning. Subcommittee was originally assigned for, which was to work on the, on the zoning of that area and what can be done with it. So I think the subcommittee should focus on the zoning and I think Brian should focus on the master. Master plan site and work with the whole planning commission related to that. And so with that, I guess I. Unless anybody has any.
Well, let's be clear in what they, so what they approved for the land that was around the airport, not the AC. Uh, as they want it to revert back to ag, and Timmy, keep us honest, revert back to ag. Uh, however, they're open to, uh, other uses that are open area like parks and, and things of this nature. And I was told explicitly, anything that's not a business. Um, and they also would like to see some of the. Um, egg uses like a pig farm or, or nuisance type stuff to, to be pulled out, so. Um, Brian, you and I can, can talk and then it will bring it back to everybody to review and, and iterate on, but that, that's what the, the board was looking for, do I have, am I missing anything, Timmy?
Well, so here's the thing I'll say to that is a. Eight field sports complex is business.
That, that, that what they would be, they would be open to. Okay. Yeah.
Recreation, same creation, it's fine, okay, yeah.
And was, was visitor, was visitor there, whoever the, the is there.
Who's there, a lot of people were there.
How did that, it was, um. Very passionate.
Much for yourself, it's.
I would encourage you to.
It's on YouTube?
On YouTube, yeah, it's getting hits.
Okay, so. Yeah, so for those that weren't there, so. That was a little. From a sixty thousand foot view, they basically accepted the recommendation of the planning commission, was that how you would say that?
I, I would say that, but they, they also said they're open and I think there was some. Desire in this group to have some open, open areas.
And I think that was our recommendation was.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, you know, bringing back some of the eggs, something processing things of that nature.
So then, should the subcommittee meet? And when to talk about what we want to do related to that, I mean, how are we coming back?
Brian will, will draft that, it's the AC two is when the subcom, is that what you're asking for?
Yeah.
Okay, and then.
Well, I thought we were going to work on the, on the ag zoning too, no, Brian's going to do that? No, but Brian needs to make sure that he modifies it, I'm very passionate about this, okay, because the way I read it and I could be reading it wrong. But the way I read it is they could have twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine turkey there. Or two hundred and ninety-nine cattle or five hundred and ninety-nine goats. And I'd like to see those numbers come down and, and frankly, I think they should come down for the whole agricultural district, not just that area. So that's, unless I'm misreading that, that's.
Let's, I would say focus on this particular one, because that's.
Well, I think this is an important spot to focus on that, because the developer has already made it clear that, that.
I concur, I'm just saying, let's, let's focus not on all of ag, but just these.
Okay.
Particular uses and I, I think Scott can be involved too, basically, I want to get something from Brian that this group can iterate on.
Great.
And we, we can start to whittle it down from there. And I want the subcommittee to focus on, and again, if somebody opposes, just let me know, but on the zoning for that AC two.
No, we just need to make sure we're all very sharp on this, all of us need to be reading the ordinances and, and paying close attention, it's pretty clear. There aren't a lot of people doing that and, and we need to make sure that.
Yep.
That we are.
And I'll, I'll leave it this way.
I don't even think the township board realizes that.
If, if you have a strong opinion on this, send it to Brian and he will include it in his first draft to us.
The only thing I have to, I guess, say is if it's going to. Say. Area there, zoning. I do think it would, and I don't know, Brian, which is harder to do, to change that individual or to change what. Scott had said across the whole township for certain limits. Which is harder to do or which is easier to do, just because. I agree, I mean, I don't, I think it should be per acre.
Right.
Based on how many farm animals or something you could have.
Those limits.
We're talking commercial processing.
Right.
Or commercial farming type operations versus recreational type. So my question is, is it easier for you to come back with changing arc across the township versus just this one section of it?
Right, it might. Would you grandfather in any of the current farming operations?
I don't, let's, let's get his.
Anybody with twenty-nine.
Yeah, it might honestly be easier to amend the arc, because otherwise you're creating a whole new overlay district just for that area, you can't amend just that area.
It's just, but I think that, you know. Just based on what Scott's comment was and just knowing digging into this, I think it would be easier to change it, like Brian said, just across the whole township, if that is our intention. Um, and it might look better, that we are not targeting a certain area. That this is a, a concern across the township with some sort of commercial farming that we may not want.
So to me, that's. It's something we need to do and it's important and let's do it. I, I want to get this land process moving. So if we are going to change the definition of arc, let's say, hey, it's going to revert back to arc with certain other uses. So if we are gonna change the definition of arc, let's say, hey, it's going to revert back to arc with certain other uses. Let that go so that we can start the clock, because there is a process with this. And then we can, at the same time, simultaneously work on the arc and whether it's this subcommittee or another, we had talked about a farmland preservation subcommittee. Would that not be better?
Right.
To, to take this on, yeah, member Rissy.
Well, I was just gonna say, the other, the other amendment that are changed that we were talking about for that area is to add recreation.
Yeah.
And I don't think anybody would disagree with adding recreation to any of the agricultural zone areas of the township, if they think this one is okay to have it.
Right.
So I mean, you're, you know, all of the changes you're talking about making are specific to, to that arc zoning, I think. And that's, that's why I was throwing that out there.
Yeah, and if that's the case, then let, let's just change it if, to, to arc.
Yeah, I mean, does anybody here wanna see a, a, uh, say there's some arc land out off of Butrick? Does anybody wanna see a farm out there with twenty-nine thousand chickens? I, I don't think that's a good spot for twenty-nine thousand chickens anymore than I think Thorne Up Over Drive is a good spot for twenty-nine thousand chickens. Right, I mean, it's.
Throw twenty-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-seven.
Listen, I, I don't wanna see that.
But that's, that's my point, is that I think you have to step back and say, well, maybe this is something that was written into the ordinance a hundred years ago. You know, and we're not in that position anymore. That's not a good fit for what we have, you know?
I would just like us to do a little due diligence to make sure that we're coming up with, doesn't negatively affect current farmers that are out there, that are, that have been doing it for, hold on, for two generations and.
I just.
They would continue on.
Okay, so those would be grandfathered in?
And, and, and you can say that a higher number of swine or cattle or whatever it is you're, you're looking at can be approved by special use. I mean, that's an option, you can put that in there, it's just, it needs to have a review.
Fine, I just don't want the initial people in there.
No, it, it can only apply to new stuff, it'd be, it'd be a non-conforming use, that kind of approved non-conforming use, remember, or not. So that's half the equation and I'm sorry, I'm a little slow on some of these terms still, so that's the, the, the ag side. But tightening the, the.
AC.
Tightening the AC.
Yeah.
Um, is a separate topic and the board was also an approval of that suggestions.
Yes.
Yes, and that's really written already, I think for the most part, we just have to change it a little bit, because we have to change where the overlay district is probably, so I think that, that's a conversation we can have in the subcommittee and I think we can. Work through that.
My question is, is it a separate subcommittee for the farmland preservation that, that goes and fixes arc?
Well, now see, but the thing.
It, it goes against what you said about having Brian do it and so that it would be a little quicker.
I, I'm fine with Brian doing it too, I'm asking the question, like, what, how do we wanna take this on?
I have a suggestion.
Yeah.
What if, not doing this, but what if somebody made a motion to ask Brian to edit the arc uh, zoning to limit the uh, number of animals per parcel and to allow for recreation? And then to, to work on that, and then at the same time, when you talk about farmland preservation, I haven't, I, I know I'm not prepared to talk about that yet, because I haven't read through it word by word, but that's a whole, probably a whole nother issue. And that's why I'm. Unrelated to this right now.
That's why I'm asking how we wanna do it. Member Engel, you're being awfully quiet, do you have any thoughts on this?
I think they should be separated. Um, I, I think that to your earlier point, we need to get this piece done. And then work on the farmland preservation, I don't think they're mutually exclusive, I don't think we run into a problem that, do we, Brian?
No, I mean, if, if it's, we're just looking at parks and the intensive farming uses as something staff could easily look at and bring a draft ordinance amendment to this group.
And while simultaneously getting a uh, amendment to the master plan, moving into arc, I, I, I've made commitments to the board to get that to them as quickly as possible. Uh, within uh, the, the required date range, we have to start kicking off some of that. Which I, I believe you're aware of what, what needs to happen, I mean, we have notified.
Yep.
All of the surrounding areas and agencies, um, but I think there's some other things, when I remember talking to the attorney that we have to do.
Right, we have to actually get that draft of what is changing.
Yeah. So, uh, that, that's not a short period of time, we have to do a bunch of public hearing, that's why I'm in such a rush to get it going, because it's gonna take a while once it does go. Uh, and candidly, I want that out of this, this planning commission, so that we can focus on more important.
That's the master plan side of it, yes.
Right, yes.
Right.
The arc thing is, I, I think we should absolutely do that in tandem, I just, I want that, the, the land, and again, if anybody has a, an objection to this, say it, right? But I'm of the mind to get that land moving quickly so that we can get the process going. Does anybody have any concerns with that approach?
No.
Member Richardson, you seem to be, you have a questionable.
I'm just thinking about what you're saying and the way that you're saying it, like, what is the, when you say get the process going?
To amend the master plan for future land use, we have a bunch of hurdles that we have to jump over, uh, including public hearings here as well as at the township level. And I want to kickstart that process, so that we can get this done by the end of the year. And if, so if we start it now, we'll get there and if we do this arc thing in tandem, because they don't have to happen, you know, one after the other, if we do it in tandem, by the time it's set up, it'll be delivered.
So while we're doing this, is there, is there any cease and desist or anything that we could, I mean, is there?
Because we're actively working on it.
Okay. So the developer can't.
Nope.
Okay.
Alright, I talked to the lawyer about that, he has a letter that's been written already that, I'll be, if he wants the application.
You wanna, we deliver the wet letter?
Yeah, it's, it's already ready.
So then, it sounds like from a subcommittee standpoint, since we need some direction here, the only thing we need to work on is the AC district stuff, clean that up and bring it back, because the arc, it sounds like is pretty well settled, based on the conversation just now, I think.
I, I believe so, again, we can, we can do a straw man poll, but I think member Bruno had a question before we do that.
Kind of just being above board with the community, so I, I love your plan, um, but just my question is, would we have to in good faith, let everyone know who's coming to these, you know, meetings about, we're gonna revert to arc, that arc is gonna be defined slightly different? That would be part of the zoning ordinance amendment, we do public hearings for that.
So that, that will happen to her. Okay, there, there'll be lots of transparency through both of these processes, they're not short or, for that reason, remember Rissy?
And Brian, familiarize us again on the process for changing the zoning, to amend the zoning for a district?
So, or a text amendment like that is a public hearing that's noticed at the planning commission level for a recommendation to the township board?
And then is there a hearing at the board level too?
I don't believe, there's, there isn't one required, if we, in the past, we receive a lot of comment at the planning commission, then we do hold a second one, but it's not statutory required.
Thank you.
And, and, and for the new members, I mean, these notice periods um, are long and, and, and we have to, you know, and that, that, again, that, that's why you're seeing me kind of rush it, because I want to get the process moving. One thought that I would have if we do this is, uh, you know, add at least one more to that subcommittee. Um, I'm thinking, and I've talked to him on the phone before coming to this meeting, to make sure he would be agreeable, our resident attorney, uh, member Angle perhaps joining, um, just to help out with uh, some of the language around the AC two district.
I just.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that, I don't care, but um, I think it's hard, I, I think we need to watch when we refer to you as our resident attorney.
Fair enough.
You are not being paid by the township, I don't think, to be our municipal attorney. And I think that when we refer to you at that, as that, at this level, I think that it's misleading to people to think that maybe you are council for the township and you are not. And I just think that.
That's mine.
I think we need to be careful.
No, that's mine, I, I often refer to Ralph as our resident architect and, and uh, Joe as our resident attorney.
What do you refer to me as?
Helen.
The guy who questions perking.
Our resident engineers, right, I, I, you know, we're, we're, we are blessed to have a, you know, um, yeah, resident administrator, right? Managed huge healthcare, right, so like, we, we have all of this talent here and, and so I do often, you know, speak of that, so that the people that are in the audience have awareness that.
But I just think that.
But that's, no, that's, that's great feedback. So, uh, I will amend it and say, member Engel, uh, joining it, um, given his experience, uh, working with different landforms.
Well then, if we are going to have a.
I want to, just to clarify, it's not just the AC part that we're talking about then, we're actually the board, the industrial zoning section on the.
As well.
South.
Yeah.
Corner as well, that was not.
Yes.
Be adopted in any way, that's, I mean, we don't, it's already made up, I mean, I guess we don't have to really change it, it's just bringing it back formally.
Yeah.
We can make any re- recommendation as a committee we choose to make. Oh, so then, uh, I guess my first question would be, did member Engel accept the invitation to uh, serve on the committee?
Let him answer that, he did.
Okay, and so then, when is this committee gonna meet?
That, that was my question.
And then I would normally say we could talk about it after the meeting, but there may be people that watch this meeting that want to attend to provide feedback, so I think it's important to.
I, I will mention when I called member Engel, um, I did say that uh, the, the subcommittee would consider meeting later if he would uh, entertain joining, so I wanna make sure that I put that out there that.
If so, then I won't be, I mean, seven thirty is probably the latest I can meet and.
But it's not six thirty and six when you are all.
I would like it to be five, five o'clock.
And I'm okay with early meetings, I, I prefer early meetings, that's not an issue for me, so.
I, I know we want to disclose it right now, I, I have some work commitments in the next month, the month of March, that it's very hard for me to commit. I have some things going on.
Okay, well, we can communicate after the meeting and try to pick a date and we'll have Brian post it and move forward from there. Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
Chris, I think just as one point, since we had a motion to create the subcommittee, it's probably appropriate to have a motion to add Joe to the committee formally.
Okay, if somebody would uh.
Make a motion, motion to add uh, uh, member Engel to the subcommittee to.
Motion made by member Rissy, supported, supported by member Corstnich, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none? Member Engel has been added to it and then um, uh, yeah, member Moxley.
And just one comment on future schedule of the uh, AC subcommittee. Uh, I may have to go to Dallas to help my daughter who's got a broken leg. You know, I'm not sure how long we'll be out of town, it's gonna be at least a week, maybe, maybe more, so.
You could join via Zoom.
I think we've decided that subcommittees, people can't join via Zoom.
Typically, we've done it in person, you can always join just to hear what's going on, but.
You can't.
You can listen.
We, we have, in the, in the past, when we had subcommittee members that weren't able to attend, we included them via speakerphone and just so they could hear what's going on and make a comment.
Something, you have to be present. Are we, and if a subcommittee is not deliberate, are we sure they can't attend and participate via Zoom, what?
It's not available.
What's that?
There isn't that room, in that conference room.
It is, it just wasn't available to us to use at seven thirty in the morning, with no staff present, so, we did our own Zoom.
Change, but they were in the vote.
They were, they, we were told, I wasn't a part of it.
Right.
At that point, that we were told that people couldn't join, members could not join via Zoom to participate, that's what, and I don't know the best story, that's where it came.
It was here, you, you could, you could listen, but you couldn't, and you could, you couldn't vote. But in the subcommittee, I, like, number Rissy said, we were pretty, you know.
We just used the speakerphone when member Rappin was absent one day and it worked out fine.
But it was never, but it sounded deliberate to body, like, can.
Right.
Can you look into that, because we have enough subcommittees, I would love it if we could just have them on Zoom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the, the problem comes in, is that then you need somebody operating the Zoom, so the general public has a link to get into. If you're gonna offer Zoom to the, I mean, I don't know, if you offer Zoom to the participants, then do you have to offer it to the public as well?
You would in theory have.
And, and I think then that that's a commitment of township resources that I don't know if.
Well, let's.
You'd already have a Zoom ID, you'd already have a Zoom.
Yeah, but then you have to have somebody like Jessica to to oversee that's working, you know?
Into public comment.
Exactly, I mean, there's, there's a lot more involved, whereas if you just say this meeting's happening in person, here it is, it's, you know.
I'd love to understand it, that's all.
Sure.
Alright, are we all, let's just do a quick straw poll, um, is everybody good with the plan, I'll re, I'll repeat it. Um, three things will happen simultaneously, we will start the process of uh, reverting the master plan to ag for, or the arc for future land use, uh, for the non-airport owned land, uh, that is currently designated as industrial. Uh, simultaneously, Brian and staff will.
Uh, excuse me.
Yeah.
It's not currently designated, it's currently master planned as industrial, right?
I thought I said designated in the master plan, no? Future use, it is currently for future use as industrial, it currently is zoned ag, we will change the future, Brian will change the future use to uh, back to arc. Uh, simultaneously, Brian and team will draft uh, some revisions to arc as a whole, uh, that will reduce uh, the number of, of livestock uh, as well as uh, include additional uses uh, for, for open space. Uh, and then, third, the subcommittee will reconvene to look at the AC two and the industrial land in the southwest.
And AC one.
And AC one. Am I, is that? Is every, uh, the, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Brian, do you feel confident with your marching orders on this?
Hmm.
Okay. Alright, now the fun stuff comes, the planning commission rules and of conduct and bylaws.
Oh, my screen went off, it's so long.
I was really hoping you'd be running the meeting when this was coming.
You know, we give kind of, kind of brief introduction here of where this was at, so again, we kind of started this review a little over a year ago. Um, and as a basis, right now, the planning commission doesn't have a separate set of bylaws, it's included in chapter twenty-three of the zoning ordinance, which is a little unusual. Um, so they started, the legal council drafted bylaws, kind of based off what was in chapter twenty-three while amending those. Um, the planning commission pretty much finished the review of the bylaw specifically and then moved on to the rules of conduct, which are referenced in the bylaws. Um, and so we had a few questions for legal counsel, which, it'll gap there, but we have gotten answers back. So in your packet, we have a draft of the bylaws, the only change is that the definition of conflict of interest has been added, which was at the suggestion of legal councils, that's how it's referenced in the Planning Enabling Act. And then in section three, two, I just added a sentence there to clarify if a vacancy filled, is filled, if it's an unexpired term or not. And then for the rules of conduct, uh, the legal council provided additional definition for both conflict of interest and ex parte communication um, as requested by the planning commission, and so those are the changes that have been made since we reviewed this almost um, a year back from today. Remember, no? So I feel like I'm the antagonist, and I don't mean to be, but the content in here is gorgeous, everything and it makes so much sense. But having done a startup and having worked at a large business, I feel like we're trying to do something almost, I use the word rogue, I don't know how I better describe it. If I drew a Venn diagram of the chapter twenty-three of the zoning ordinance and a Venn diagram of the bylaws and a Venn diagram of the rules of procedure. In the rules of procedure, I think, get six different names throughout here, like you just called it rules of conduct, um, it's not clear what those are, but so there's three things, the Venn diagrams are so overlapping that it would become a maintenance nightmare if you were ever to change something, because you have to be changing it multiple places. I reached out to um, a couple of um, board members and asked, what is the current relationship between the planning commission and the board and if they're all on good terms, is there any reason why we wouldn't make these changes directly in the zoning ordinance? So I guess I thought to you guys, why, why wouldn't we make chapter twenty-three more robust and capture all of this than this kind of interwoven three documents or a lot of overlap?
I think I know the answer.
I think you do.
When I was the chairman of the planning commission and we started discussing this, which would have been, if my calculations are right, probably two, two and a half years ago, we had a different planning director in place and at the time, the recommendation, I think, was that it was easier to create this second document than to modify what was in the zoning ordinance, and so we went down that path.
And.
Does anybody disagree with that assessment?
But legal counsel, I think, even gave us that recommendation.
I think they did as well.
This is the norm to not have it in the zoning ordinance, to have these documents separate, so they're easier to take it out of the zoning completely. Um, because I live in a world where there's lots of changes that are reflected in multiple different documents and one of our goals was to make it easier, so there is just one place to see the rules and to see if something changes, it is just in one document versus, and that the planning commission can make those changes.
And I'd also add that at the time we were discussing that and we had. And I'd also add that at the time we were discussing that and we had. We had referred some of this to legal counsel when I was chairman. It was uh member Merlin, I believe, who brought up several months later, where are we on that? And it turned out that legal counsel had not. Replied with anything, we sent them questions, we sent them a draft and they didn't. They didn't, they didn't come back, that nothing happened with it, which ironically is the exact same thing that happened with Chairman Nordic.
So I guess. Again. The the lone guy out here, but I I I heard what you said, but I see three different documents that all define conflict of interest. And if one's wrong, they're all wrong, you're changing it three places, I see three different documents that define, I think, terms. It it's, it's, again, the Venn diagram has a lot of overlap. If 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 this is to compartmentalize and make it easier, then I think it needs to be constructed such that there's singular points. If if conflict of interest define it somewhere and then leave it out of the next document, something else define it somewhere, leave it out of the next document. It's just my take on it and I can, I can belabor you with all of the redundancies and I can draw you the benefit if it helps. But reading through here, it's it's, it becomes very, very, very circular. And having done a startup inside of a very large corporation. This whole concept of well, then it defers to the document above it, which then the first the document above it. Just creates snarls. But the content is great, so don't get me wrong, all of the hard work is there, I'm just questioning moving it with different.
I think our goal was to make it easier, so I don't know whether. Whether we have final drafts in front of us completely, but I know we worked really hard.
And long.
We did. And and I think everybody here is numb of this now, and while he's making great comments. And 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 the 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 lack of response, there's nothing to do with you. The longest planning commission meetings in the history of of the decade. And I got that, and that's how it was hard, it was for me to raise this, because I I I I did glean that from previous. We lost a member over this, it was, it was, it was.
To make things much easier, like truly to make it so there was one place to change, and I don't know if. What we're looking at was our final, final, um, and I know the zoning piece. We can't change that until these are in place to take this out of that, so that takes out one piece of your equation is.
We would say that sentence again.
So you, these are. These are currently listed in the zoning ordinance, correct?
Administrative procedures.
Correct, so the goal, we have to. Make these final before we can take them out of there.
I'm saying the exact opposite.
I know you are, but I'm saying, we looked at it a million different ways when we looked at it originally and. Legal counsel agreed that it's not normal for it to be in the zoning ordinance. That it is normal for them to be separate documents. And so we worked hard on pulling them out of there, making these separate documents. Based on what legal council's recommendation was, what the standard is in other municipalities is. That's why we changed it, and so right now, some of the overlap that you are talking about will be removed. If the board agrees, because the zoning changes have to come from the board. If these finally get adopted.
Okay, so I will stand corrected if if I can repeat back to what you said. I did not walk away with what you said was actually gonna happen, because this document makes circular references back to chapter twenty-three. So I don't think it's being pulled out of chapter twenty-three. If it was being pulled out, I would agree.
The idea behind this document was so that we didn't have to make an amendment to chapter twenty-three. The idea was that this document would not be in conflict with chapter twenty-three. But that, but that it would stand by itself, and if we needed to make an amendment to it. We could simply as a planning commission, and it wouldn't involve the township board at the level that it would if we. Changed chapter twenty-three.
So that is my understanding.
So your goal is to have two identical documents that aren't redundant.
That was essentially, I think, what the original.
It's not what our goal was.
Well, I think that's originally what legal counsel was asking us.
That's what Scott said. His interpretation of it, and that's how this reads, but that was not our original. Plan, and that was not what legal counsel, and even when you read through the notes in here from Brian, she said, we can pull these out in a separate document. That it is not normal for them to be listed in the zoning ordinance.
Right, but initially, they didn't want us to edit the zoning ordinance, that was the whole reason for creating this document, so we didn't have to go to the board and. And modify the zone, otherwise we would just modify the zoning ordinance.
The legal, legal council said they wrote it so it's not in conflict with the zoning ordinance, technically, you don't have to amend it. But you could amend it to remove the redundancies, because you don't need the zoning ordinance, the W just use the bylaws.
Interesting though, because like two and a half, three years ago, they didn't want to amend the ordinance.
So 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 let me try to find, because I I again, I feel, I feel like I'm gonna get eggs thrown at me, I don't want eggs thrown at me, but I'm just, let me try to do a different way to say this. It sounded like. That was then, this is now, some encumbrances then have changed. There's a reference to a previous role that someone's not here anymore. With maybe better relationships, better skilled personnel. Better legal representation. Better board members. Could we take another high level look at? How best to implement the content, somebody create a lot of content. So I'm looking at this and I say ninety-five percent of it is good. So I don't think it's a major reset, it's not like we're starting from scratch, it's just where is it housed, could we revisit where and how is it housed? To be most effective for us in decades to come as opposed to the snarl.
So legal council's recommendation on that was that it be housed in a separate bylaws.
So, member Bernal, are you uh signing up to, are you volunteering to to run a a. A one man subcommittee to with, or maybe a two man with member Roland.
I would.
Member Roland, I think.
I would volunteer to work with someone on a township board, like this gentleman over here, Timmy, who I think would be very open. To creating a streamlined document, one stop shopping for the township. And be willing to swim upstream.
I guess that's. I don't understand.
So as an outsider, if you read this, do you agree that if that was the goal, this this doesn't hit the mark?
We looked at the changes, to be honest with you, because. No, I was a part of the original and I thought that was what our plan was.
Well, I think at one time we even had a subcommittee review.
If if I hear what you're saying, Wendy, is. Your thought was that by doing this. I think very nice job on the bylaws last year that you guys spent all that time on. We basically take chapter twenty-three and reduce its size, we don't need it anymore, and we give ourselves the flexibility as a commission to make changes. To this document going.
Bylaws and the rules of conduct.
Correct, you just take it right out of the ordinance completely, which we're authorized to do by law.
That was my understanding.
That right, Brian?
Correct, yeah.
So. This little neat print of chapter twenty-three administrative procedures doesn't become, is no longer, would no longer be relevant. To our consideration of either the bylaws or the rules of procedure.
Correct.
Period.
Yeah, there's no reason any of this needs to be included in the zoning ordinance.
That was my understanding. And even when. Mister Merlin was on this committee, I thought that was. One of our primary things was the contradict, having it in too many places, changes get made, they're not made in two. We talked to legal counsel. My understanding was we could pull it out of the zoning and make these two separate documents that were very clean. That would come to us once a year for review, just so that the, everybody would know we're all on the same. And that's what we would be using.
Well, I would just like to see us get this done. As orderly and quickly as we can, because I have a feeling this is getting to be very expensive.
Traditionally.
Right. I mean, this has been reviewed and reviewed and reviewed.
The subcommittee to do that.
Do we think there needs to be? So just want to repeat back before I before, because I volunteered, now it's warped a little bit, but I, but I, I think I actually like the way it's morphed better. I heard that this was all started so we wouldn't be amending. I propose that we amend. There was pushback that no, this stops from ending, stops the need for amendment, and then we came full circle to no, this requires amendment. The amendment is to redact all this content from the current zoning ordinance. And to make these truly standalone non-snarl documents.
I think it's a great way to go.
I'm very supportive of that.
Chris, honestly, I think staff could do that, I think this was written so that we can pull it out of chapter twenty.
I think this needs a subcommittee.
My 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 only point for clarification in my 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 naivete, I read this all from when I looked at chapter twenty-three. From a different point of view. I understood chapter twenty-three governed. Two different commissions.
It does, it governs the zoning boards, we wouldn't.
So we would, so we wouldn't really getting more, I don't know how deep I want to drill down this, but. So it wouldn't be repealing really all of chapter twenty-three, we'd be striking all references to the planning commission's procedures within chapter twenty-three. Chapter twenty-three would still have. Its own entities regarding zoning appeals.
I I would be careful on how you word that, because I think it would still reference the planning commission for some items that aren't in. In this document, but any, any. Circular redundancy, yeah, that's where you would. And that's why you have to go over them with a fine tooth comb. We did this. We did this, and I swear we did it in a subcommittee, I I I want to say.
That's what the four hour meetings.
Ah, but I remember doing it at Township Hall, Ralph was there, Craig was there, you were there, Ben was there.
There was never a bylaws subcommittee.
Maybe I'm thinking of something that was on the other subcommittee that really. Followed the same content.
Feel like you can get this done? And you can consult member Bruno as you go through it? All right, anybody have a problem with that?
No, so then we, I just want to clarify though, then we will get the final. Section twenty. Two, twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, section twenty-three to review. And the final bylaws and code of conduct.
Yeah, these, these are the most up to date bylaws, and and again, we can adopt these at any time. And then we, you can make amendments to chapter twenty-three later, or can do them simultaneously.
And then the only other thing, just whoever looks at this, because I know this was a big problem before, just calling them. The same name throughout everything.
Yeah, the, that was from the attorneys where they had rules of procedure, there's no reason we can't change that to rules of conduct.
Well, if if. Because to that vein, when you get to the last section of the bylaws. Whoever was writing this got themselves confused, because Article eleven basically says. The rules and procedures adopted by the planning commission, the. The last section is basically that they can change the bylaws, and they're talking about changing the rules and procedures. That that first sentence in Article eleven.
Yeah, it needs to be cleaned up.
Remember, you and Brian have a lot to talk about, and we don't want to get in the way of that, so.
Please include trustee.
So do you need a formal, do we need to have a? Do we need to have a formal vote to add to create the subcommittee?
There's no subcommittee. There's no subcommittee, and if it takes you till January of twenty-four to get it done, I mean.
For twenty-five.
I I think we have all looked at the the new, the bylaws, and we've all looked at the rules of procedure slash conduct, would it be helpful? If there are any glaring changes that we've seen here today that we think need to be made, other than the titling of things, and maybe the references to chapter twenty-three, which have to come out. Anything else that people found that we might be able to help you with?
I have a few, is it better to go through them now and take people's time, or to create a list of errata and present it later, or like, I don't know.
Now, I I it's easier to look at something that, you know, that you're bringing, yeah, like, bring it back to us and we can, we can iterate if we need to.
See it beforehand and read through and like digest it versus.
I can, I can do that.
If anyone has comments on what's in here, feel free to email them to me and we'll do it on a revised copy then.
Yeah, great. Awesome, Article ten. Uh, any other business? Yes.
There was discussion at our last meeting about. Changing the title of the Round Hill. Subcommittee recommendations. Uh, is, have we heard anything from our attorney about uh that?
I did not, I got distracted for a few weeks and did not send that request on, so.
What was the name of that developer?
Gusty.
Well, that was the owner, I don't think the actual.
Could we call it the Gusty Subcommittee, can you ask the attorney if we can?
I might be mispronouncing.
I think he, that's more reflect.
That's what I'm saying, that's my whole, was my.
I know, no, I think, I think I I really, it was thoughtful, but like, no, that's.
Developer's name?
He was a project manager on site for the developer.
He was a guy who was right there, lying to us many times, so.
There's the non-resident attorney here, I I don't really see a problem with renaming it. I don't see it, not legally, if you're concerned about the non-resident.
Got to be careful, because non-residents. So the ex officio members, we already have an ex officio member, he sits down there.
Okay, do we have any visitors that are on Zoom? Anybody that wishes to speak?
Oh, I have a question for you, for everybody. Under Article ten, any other business, is this the time where we would just like bring up random? Ideas, comments, concerns?
Yeah, no, you bring up anything random you want, bring it on.
Okay, well, there's a few things I've noticed, I mean, I love Cascade, there's a few things. May maybe following broken windows theory where I can see a couple of things that we could tweak to make it. A little bit nicer. Mostly cosmetic things. I feel as though we're developing somewhat of a graffiti problem near the highway that did not used to exist, does now. Um, I also think. The hotel, or I guess it's a motel next to the McDonald's situation has not been resolved. I wonder about Hotel Avenue, is that legally an actual street, or is that just a parking lot with a street sign? Who fixes that? I know the answer is nobody, but. It runs in between like Aldi and Costco down to Target. Off-road vehicle. And then.
Uh, that, let's go to that one, uh, Brian, can you check with the road commission on that, that is a road, so.
It's been.
Because there's a hotel back there too.
Yeah, it has been repaired.
Has been repaired, it's a much.
Yes, that's true, behind Target up to thirty-third has been repaired and it's nicer, but alongside Target. Is not good still, or again.
Actually, I I just drove that today, so it was horrendous right past Target, there's a little bridge you go over. They paved that about halfway to, what is it, thirty-second? It's beautiful, but the latter half they didn't is is not. We can disasters when you're talking about, so even ignoring maybe the target, target parking lot, the latter half of that road is.
We can check with, Brian can check with the road commission.
Okay, and then again, I'm focusing kind of on the same area over and over, but. There still are homeless people living next to the Aldi in between. I guess you'd say. I'm sorry, I'm not pulling it up properly here, whatever. Little plaster creek there and the highway on and off ramp. Um, I know that. We've somehow maybe addressed that in some way, but the panhandling out there. Is still going on when you try to leave Costco. And they seem to always disappear back over into this area.
You know where they're living is, um, so ninety-six and twenty-eight Street. The northwest corner, there's a group of pine trees right up close to the highway kind of. And if you look real close, like when I'm driving, I don't see it, but when my husband's driving, I can look, there's blue tarp's underneath of the pine trees.
Yeah, they evicted the guy that was living there.
There's new ones, I think, they evicted the ones that were under the highway and the ones that were over by.
Because that, when that was going on, that that's where that tarp was placed, that tarp was placed in the fall. Because I brought it to township staffs uh attention and they. I believe M dot, M dot, right, they took the person away, but nobody ever cleaned up the mess.
Usually the townships, when they.
Township cleaned up the mess, yeah, the township cleaned up the mess on the south side of the road, but they did not clean up the mess on the north side.
And you're sure he's not living.
Well, somebody kind of moved back in since, but that tarp was there in the fall.
I think what you're saying when they leave, I think that panhandling area, I think that's one of the places they're going.
I just, I continue to see people that seem to be panhandling and or living there.
I think we were told by manager. By Ben, that if we contact him and let him know that. The road commission has noticed them enough that now it's easier for them to evict. People in the future, because they've been through the process, is that correct?
My understanding was that M dot gave us permission to call it trespassing on their property, so they can be removed by police.
Because they've done the the counseling that they, that is required, M dot requires counseling to be done. Before they evict people off their property, which is probably the right thing to do, um. That was my understanding too, that we can just contact Ben if you see somebody or see a new.
I had been watching in the snow and I haven't seen any tracks to that town all winter long, but. I had been watching in the snow, and I haven't seen any tracks to that town all winter long, but it is still there. It's just, I don't think people notice it.
Well, I can get it cleaned up.
Yes, please.
And then a couple more items that I've noticed. So again, the graffiti issue is. Like a mold that's growing, like, um, we're not taking care of. The areas where there are graffiti, so now there are maybe emboldens the same people to just create more.
That in the highway, like the overpass, is that where you're seeing?
Um, every overpass in Cascade now has some graffiti there. And it just seems to be growing. I also.
Hang on, before you go.
Well, I was just gonna tell you, Rob, that so we are aware of the graffiti, and I've been keeping a list of where it is, and Ben's been talking with me. It's just. I believe it was too cold to paint last time they went out.
Yeah, I want you to get an answer.
Um, and then I also wonder about the. I don't wanna call it a downed power line, but a very low-hanging. At least communications line, um, on forty-eighth Street across from. Thornapple Point right near Prairie River Drive. It's been, I mean, I'm driving past it, so I, my point of reference may not be accurate. I mean, it may very well be way up in there. But it appears to droop down to like maybe five feet off the ground there in the middle, and it's been that way. At least since November. Um. It looks bad and maybe potentially dangerous if it's, I mean, something that someone walking by could grab onto.
They'd only do it once.
Um, so that's, to me, at least a concern, but it also just looks bad. I also wonder if you has, if you've been to Cascade Township Park there, the recreation park people call it. At the corner of Thornapple, well, I guess Thornapple and thirty-six. Where thirty-six meets Thornapple.
It could drive.
Sure, yeah. We could theoretically put some sort of. Um, sound barrier wall along the highway there, or at least pine trees or something that could make it. Quieter. I was just there the other day with my kids, and we were, you know. Three feet from each other, and you have to be like, what, what, what? It's not super peaceful with the amount of noise. And then.
That's, I think, being addressed at the parks committee, right? And we've gotten a grant.
Got a grant, we're gonna be. That's great. Along there.
Yeah.
Uh, this coming year.
Yeah.
Awesome. And then the final thing that I wanted to mention. Is. I know that everyone's supposed to drive the speed limit. Um.
Everyone else.
But if anyone's ever tried to drive the speed limit, or even just five miles per hour over the speed limit along Butrick. The whole way from like, let's say. Grand River Drive down to Cascade. I mean, you'll almost end up airborne, like, it's very, it's the worst street in Cascade. As far as how much of a wooden roller coaster it feels like. Never at any point are all four of your tires on the same plane. Um, it's very bumpy. It's not as wide as it ought to be either, and. Um, it's just, it's not even the bumpiness so much as. The fact that you're always tipping back and forth like at any given moment. Um. I mean, I don't know like what the plan might be, or how far in the future it might be to address that road, but when it does become addressed. It really needs to be regraded or something. I mean, it needs to be there.
The subgrade on the hill going up from Ada Park to the to the top there by the by the. Betts Place is horrible. Even when the road was re-redone, and it was the asphalt was beautiful. It is, you're absolutely right. It's 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 a hazard. You're not paying attention, both hands on your wheel. Somebody's gonna get hurt.
Well, there's no shoulder on that road either. I mean, you make a mistake, you're.
Yeah, there's little room for error with how narrow that.
That's a road commission. That's a road commission issue, and because they manage the roads, right? But I think the biggest problem we have as a township is that we don't have any residents attend road commission meetings, really, and speak to those points. And I think if we had a hundred citizens show up at a road commission meeting month after month and after month, and complain about a particular road that's in. Deteriorating shape, I think it might get moved up on the. On the priority list, but I don't think we. I don't think we're very vocal. I could be wrong on that. I'm just, it's just an assumption, because I don't see very many people come here and be vocal about things either. But the other the other item I wanted to mention is in response to your graffiti. I certainly agree with you. The graffiti is a problem. I actually, I brought that up here a. Number of years ago, because it was a different person sitting over there, and uh, I had a situation. That I was familiar with. They had a individual that caught a person painting bridges in the township. They had their whole kit. Custom nozzles, different, all the pans arranged certain ways, templates. I mean, we had it all. Name, license plate number, everything, and they called the Kent County Sheriff's Department. They knew where the person was. And they made the good Samaritan who had everything wait on the side of the road for an hour and a half. And finally, that person called back and said, I I'm gonna go home. This is ridiculous. And they told them, oh, I'm sorry, we decided not to come to that call forty-five minutes ago. We just continued to let you wait, even though you just called us again thirty minutes ago. And we told you we were on our way, and they sheriff's department did not handle the situation, never, never. Investigated it, never took the information uh, seriously, and nothing happened. And since then, and this was a number of years ago, since then, the graffiti has expanded exponentially. But until the Kent County Sheriff's Department will follow up on leads that come in at like. Two o'clock on a Sunday afternoon, when it's bright and sunny, and there's not much going on, uh, we're just, we're not gonna get ahead of it. I mean, we can paint all the bridges we want, but they're painting them just as fast. If you look at all the overpasses on M six, including the ones that you can't see unless you're riding on a freight train. They are completely covered with graffiti, and and that's, you know, that's gonna continue to happen. Till we get ahead of it. But that's where the problem, we we have nobody really doing any enforcement on graffiti, as as far as I can see.
I still, I don't disagree with anything that you said. Um. But I still think an effort could, should be made to. I mean, even if you have to paint over it right before they paint it again.
Oh, no, I I agree with you. It needs to be cleaned up. Yeah.
And I think. A board member on the. Thank you, Sean. I think when the the sheriff comes to the board to discuss and report and their different things, and what we want. Does the township with the money we're paying them, if this is something important, then maybe it should be something that is brought up from the board. To our sheriff liaison. As something we do want addressed.
Well, as a country boy, it's not too cold for them. Shouldn't be too cold.
Have we heard anything about the hotel and that? Anything, has that been cleaned up at all, or they're still getting ninety calls a month?
We're waiting on.
We're waiting on the managers, I understand it, to act, correct?
Manager says that's in the attorney's office. But I don't, I don't know how many, that's just a goal in the attorney's office, but. Forty thousand a month.
That we're paying.
We're losing.
Losing, rather. Maybe we should push the attorney a little harder. I mean, I don't know how much attorney gets charged.
I I I suggest you take that up at the manager.
Okay.
Can you explain that for the newbies? What, how are we losing forty thousand a month?
Because there's an ordinance that we're having the attorney's draft, where if you have over, and go ahead, Timmy.
You over two calls a month, we lose the services. We wanna put a fee on there for the next call. The hotels are three hotels, three addresses in twenty-eighth Street. They're taking two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty calls a quarter. Down there. We wanna charge them for those extra calls, but I don't have the ordinance. Several communities do have that.
Who's the manager?
Ben Spacy.
Okay, Ben, all right, that's.
All right. Uh, member Riss.
Uh, just a thought. I know a long time ago, when one of the owners of several hotels in the community was in front of us to get permission to. I think build another hotel. One of the things that was brought up was that if you keep your room rates high. It helps keep out the riffraff, seems logical. Is there a, is it possible that the township can can apply a room tax? To a certain uh. Rate, say, you know, a certain dollar amount up to, the room is taxed, and it's a significant tax, and then anything over that amount, there's no tax. Because that might influence people to keep the room rates higher.
I think we need to wait and see how this plays out.
I I do, too. I was just throwing that. I was a possible.
I I I think it's it's all great, but it it doesn't fit within the confines of the information, so.
No, you're right.
And.
I'm just throwing ideas down to.
I I love that idea. I suggested one similar to Timmy. I just don't know what we can and can't do, but it does sit here, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, member Moxley.
Uh, my wife and I try to walk over at Peace Park every other day. And uh, speaking about ISOs, there is a farm operation at the corner of Bolt and Grand River. That is a dump, and it needs to be cleaned up, but I don't know if there's some way we can. Uh, enforce that. Obviously, we can't just kick them out, but I mean, there's an old uh. Flywheel steam engine there, there's. Buildings that are falling apart. There's all kinds of junk, and it just looks.
It looks like a junkyard.
It does.
Yeah, it's looked like that since before it became Peace Park. I I drove out there with Tom McDonald when that was being contemplated, and I'd never been to that corner. That, wow, what is that?
Been that way since the business closed.
And I'm I'm sure it's related to the farming operation on the other side of the road. Down by the river.
Bosberg's uh, sand and block. They used to sell cinder blocks there years ago, I think. And sand and gravel. There's gravel put back there, rethrilled at least for many years.
Twenty, thirty years ago, no?
Oh, it's a lot more than that. It was, yeah, I mean, if you read the old suburban life newspapers, I think there's there's ads in there for getting sand and block over it. Bosberg's.
Yeah.
Ralph, I'll look into that property.
Appreciate it.
Um, member Richardson, did you get your list extinguished?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
All right, but no, no, thank you for bringing this.
Yeah.
Press perspective, it's good.
Thank you for agreeing to serve on a one-man subcommittee, even though it wasn't necessary.
We we need one man. Pretty sure. So Steve was supposed to be on there.
That's fair.
Timmy. If we could get Timmy in more subcommittees, I think. By himself.
Yeah.
Come on, you're gonna have a season. All right, does anybody else have any other business? All right, do we have any visitors that are wishing to speak? All right, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'm a movie adjourn.
Member Angle makes the motion supported by member Moxley.
Yeah.
All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Have a good night, all.
Okay.
Oh, Brian, we're on in two weeks. Uh, anything? On there yet?